All right, is everybody ready to start? Okay, great. I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. Okay, hold on one sec. Think I did the right thing here. All right, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zeth.
Here.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge to allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. And I want to thank you all who are able to join us here in our hybrid format. We have board members both here at the Ed Center along with some of our staff, and we also have board members participating virtually. And also, we're just going to take a moment to remember a former board member. Kathy Gebhardt's going to read a short statement just about Jean Benelli. Kathy?
Thanks, Tina. Jean Benelli was an individual who had an untold impact on the Boulder Valley School District. She began her career in BVSD back in 1970, but was then called Lewisville Junior/Senior High School, and in 1972 was part of the opening staff of Centaurus High School. She eventually moved to Boulder High School, where she continued to work as a math and science teacher before moving up the ranks to become Dean of Students, Assistant Principal, and ultimately, Principal. Before retiring, she served as an Assistant Superintendent in Cherry Creek School District and worked at the Colorado Department of Education. But as you know, she wasn't finished at retirement. She went on to serve on this Board of Education and more recently worked to bring a historical preservation project to Boulder High School. She was also a tireless volunteer in some of our elementary schools in Broomfield. I had the opportunity myself to meet Jean many times, and she was truly an inspiration to any who met her and any who were fortunate enough to know her and work with her. We will miss you, Jean, and our condolences go to her family and friends.
Thank you for reading that. And, okay, so then our next item is the Superintendent's Report. Rob?
Thank you, Board President Marquess, board members. Brief report this evening. We do have several information items, and I want to be just mindful of our time. As you could imagine, all of our efforts right now are focused on our return to in-person learning. As a reminder for the board and public, grades three through five, sixth and ninth grade will return on October 20th, and grade seventh and eighth and 10 through 12 will return on October 27th. Just want to, another, just huge thank you to our staff, to our team, everybody in the district, teachers, leaders. Everyone is working tirelessly to make sure that this is successful. We're continuing to keep an eye on the health data. Our health data continues to improve, and we will continue to keep an eye on that. And so, all efforts right now in our district are really headed towards the return to in-person learning for all of our students. And finally, the second item, I'd like to give an acknowledge to our outstanding board, acknowledgement to our outstanding Board President, Tina Marquess. And so, as you may have heard, fellow board members, but the public may not have heard, Tina recently received the 2019 McGuffey Award from the Colorado Association of School Boards during Casby's Fall Regional Meeting. McGuffey Award honors unique board members who bring committed and passionate service to their board work. Tina served on the board since 2013, and she's been our president for the past three years. And I know that fellow board members helped write her nomination, and they noted her deep understanding of board governance, her outstanding fortitude, leading the district with a steady hand during this pandemic crisis. Tina, you've just been an incredible board president to work with. I'm so thankful, so grateful, your work and how it's impacted the 30,000 students we have an honor to serve. So, I want to join the chorus of praise to thank Tina for outstanding service, and congratulations on receiving this prestigious award. Round of applause for Tina. And, board members, that's all I have for my update today.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that, and thank you, Kathy, for nominating me. That was really kind, and it's really great to be appreciated after doing this volunteer work for seven years. So, any questions for Rob on his report? No? Great. All right. So then, our next.
Tina, let me, Tina?
Yes.
I just need to correct something. It wasn't just me nominating you. You need to know that the whole board supported it, as did Rob and the staff. So, it was well deserved. I just didn't want you to think that it wasn't all of us who are very appreciative of your service.
Oh, well, thank you. And then, I appreciate it even more. So, thank all of you. All right. Any other questions or comments for Rob? All right. So, hearing that, we'll move on to public participation. And as many of you know by now, that we're doing our public participation virtually. If you wish to speak at a meeting, you need to sign up prior to noon on the day of the meeting with the Board Secretary Laura Schaefer. You can find that information on the BVSD.org website if you search for the Board of Education. We recognize the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of schools to ensure our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner. We ask that people who speak to the board confirm, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district, limit your presentation to two minutes. And if you run out of time or would like to share additional information, please email us. We do read all of our email, and I certainly try to respond to all of it. And then, finally, just recognize that students often attend or view our meetings, so please make your remarks suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade. And so, when you start, you will see a yellow card. When you have 30 seconds remaining, after 10 seconds, you will see an orange card. You can see Laura holding those up. And at the end of your two minutes, your microphone will be muted. Okay. So, our first speaker, which is on an agenda item, is Patricia Hertzler. She's not here? Okay. So then, we'll move on to speakers on non-agenda items, and we'll start with Meet Shah. Me?
Hello, Board. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. My name is Meet Shah, and I am a senior at Centaurus High School. As part of our CAS project for the IB Diploma Program, my partner Zach Mund and I are speaking with you today to propose a change to Board Policy IKF 2021 concerning the waiving of athletic credits. The current policy stipulates that a maximum of 10 athletic credits may be waived from participation in approved CHSAA sports. However, sports athletics only waive two, which seems insufficient to us. Participation in sports requires a major time commitment, is physically demanding, and provides a better physical education. A standard gym class typically lasts one semester and is attended four days a week and averages 50 minutes per class, coming to about 70 hours in total and equaling five credits. One season athletics, on the other hand, totals around 96 hours, which is actually an underestimate, as it does not include competitions, extended practices, or preseason training. This displays the inequality of time between gym classes and athletics. Athletics comparatively require a larger amount of time for students to be successful. Sports are highly physically demanding, more so than standard gym classes, including aerobic training, intense anaerobic training, variety of workouts, and a vast array of other drills and/or exercises. Tennis, for example, requires at-home practice to master certain skills, running exercises, and proper forms while playing tennis. Not only tennis, but all sports help foster team-building skills used in order to communicate effectively while practicing one's individual sport. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Our next speaker is Zach Mund.
My name is Zach Mund, and I am working with Meet on our CAS project, proposing a change to Board Policy IKF 2021. Continuing from where Meet left off, another point of contention is the education part of physical education. Relevant areas of knowledge would be the treatment of injury, proper sleep habits, and similar topics. Athletics programs make it a priority to ensure that each of their student athletes is fully cognizant of the components building up to peak athletic performance. Coaches in all sports encourage their students to take proper care of their bodies, giving them stretching routines to be completed after workouts and discussing proper dietary practices. Coaches make sure that athletes stay hydrated, understand the importance of sleep schedules, and appreciate the balance between workout and recovery. In cross-country, for instance, athletes are taught how to address injury and mineral deficiency, and proper trail-running safety and etiquette. In tennis, participants often learn different hitting forms, footing techniques, and the importance of daily practice, and many other aspects of the sport. All of the aforementioned go-tours ensuring that students will have all of the tools necessary to participate in any desired level of athletics safely and competently. While high school gym classes are still very much a valid form of physical education, extracurricular athletics ought to be rewarded just as much, if not more. In addition to representing a larger time commitment, being more physically strenuous, and providing a higher degree of education, athletic seasons happen alongside traditional academics, narrowing the time available for schoolwork, thus making the accomplishments of student athletes all the more impressive. These athletes should not be rewarded in sufficient credits for their participation in a program which is more involved and all-around more difficult than a standard gym class. Now, we understand that during the time of coronavirus, this is a comparatively small and arbitrary issue. However, try as we might, we are unable to find a rationale for why exactly two credits seems to be the magic number. If this number is as insignificant as it seems, then hopefully, our proposal to change it from five, or, sorry, change it to five, would be simple and uncontroversial, making it so that a lot of talented athletes get the compensation that they deserve. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate you hearing our proposal.
Okay. Thank you to our speakers. Our next item is board communication. Who would like to go first? Stacy?
I want to thank Meet and Zach for their participation. We also read your email. I'm not sure if this was communicated to you or not, but the district does have an Athletic Review Committee. I'm the board representative to that committee, and this is something that we should bring to that committee. Your request is not unreasonable at all, and I am not exactly sure when we're meeting again, hopefully soon. And we will discuss this as part of our agenda when we get back together. So, thanks again.
Okay. Anyone else want to share anything? No? Richard or Kathy?
Hi, Tina. Congratulations. You deserve that award. Good job. And I want to thank Zach and Meet, and unfortunately, didn't hear the presentation on the speaker that didn't show up. I was kind of looking forward to that particular speaker, but, well, maybe next time. But that's it. Congratulations, Tina.
Thanks, Richard. Kathy, are you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set. I just want to join Stacy and Richard in saying thank you to Meet and to Zach. I really appreciate it when they see an issue and they dive into board policy and come to us with a proposed solution. I just think that's a great skill for problem-solving as they go forward, and I don't know what will happen to it, but I just appreciate them bringing that to our attention along with a proposed solution. So, I don't have anything else to add other than what I already said, which is a heartfelt congratulations to you, Tina.
Thank you. All right. So, our next item is an information item, and it is an update on BVSD's Equity Council. Rob?
Thanks, Tina. Today, we have joining us online Landon Mascheranos, who is with CEI, who's been helping lead this work along with Mike Rados, board members and community, as you remember. This is a proposal we brought back to you this summer in response to the decision around school resource officers and whether or not we should maintain the programming that we had or make some changes and adjustments. Based on that, we developed an Equity Council. CEI has walked us through a really great process. We had over 900 citizens, community members, employees, students apply for that council, and that council has been meeting for the past couple of months to discuss this issue, which is what I hope to be first of many issues to help us unpack as a board governance team on equity. And so, with that introduction, I will turn the presentation over to Landon and Mike.
So, President Marquess, members of board, and Dr. Anderson, thanks for that. That was great information, Dr. Anderson, as to how long we've been meeting, and it's been a very, very productive time with this Equity Council. So, first of all, publicly, I really want to thank the Equity Council, the 40 members. They have done an outstanding job of listening, contributing, and giving their insights and expertise on this issue. And I also want to thank CEI. The Colorado Education Initiative is an organization that helps public schools in times like this with these kinds of subjects, and Landon Mascheranos has done an excellent job of facilitating the group. He's listened to the group. We've changed some things, and so, we've really come a long way with this. And we met weekly, and it's been very intense. So, what we're going to give you is information of where we are, and it kind of prepares for our work session next week. So, Landon, take it away.
Thank you, Mike. And I just want to say thank you to the board, you, Mike, the staff supporting the Equity Council, and Superintendent Anderson. You know, when you do community-driven processes like this, it is a rare constellation of leaders that come together to open up a large conversation in the community to imagine what is possible. And not every leader, and not every board is prepared to do that. And so, I just want to applaud all of you for that process and for giving the Equity Council the latitude to conduct its business over the past two months. What I'm going to do today is share with you all a brief update on where we are with the Equity Council. And again, like Mike said, prepare you all for next Tuesday, when we'll be bringing the final recommendations from the Equity Council to you all. You know, I really talk about when we build, you know, systems and structures for community-driven participation or opening the system up. Really, you got to, you got to build the plane. Well, first off, you got to decide where the plane's going to go. You got to build the plane. You got to get people on the plane. You got to fly the plane. You got to land the plane. And we've been flying the plane, and we're about to land it. And it's an exciting thing, because I think we're going to be able to bring a lot of perspective from this incredible group of folks. As a reminder, the first task in front of the Equity Council is to take on the question of school resource officers, and I believe this has been pretty clear through Superintendent Anderson's conversation. A little bit about where we are. This is essentially, this yellow arrow points to where we were last week on 10/7. So, last week on 10/7, we had our fourth meeting of the Equity Council. Again, we're meeting weekly to sprint toward an opportunity for a recommendation and to co-create and build that over the course of this month. We started off by telling our stories. We talked about our equity narratives. We shared norms. We heard from important folks in the community. And then, we went to our second meeting, where we heard directly from the police departments. We heard from the district attorney. We heard from a variety of key stakeholders about the situation around SROs. And then, the week after that, we heard from a different group of folks. We heard from principals. We heard from students. We heard from court-appointed special advocates. We heard from the public defender. And then, last week, we heard from impacted students and families, people that were connected to us by some of you, board members, staff members, or principals themselves, for students and families who had a direct experience with school resource officers. We also heard from the District Accountability Committee that said, that shared a little about where they landed on the subject of school resource officers. What we did is we started with folks who are the farthest-away external partners, and then moved aggressively toward the core, central, most impacted group, which is our students, families, and teachers in the process. And that's a really important arc of learning, because that's actually really critical for us to leave the kind of closest with those most impacted in the situation at the heart of our conversation around recommendations. So, we were very clear with the Equity Council that the recommendations that they're building out will be presented to you, board, and the superintendent for consideration. And then, you all get to take up those recommendations alongside any other recommendations, like from the District Accountability Committee or any other groups, for your consideration and then for a direction to the district. One of the things I want to name is that we approached our initial recommendation-building process through a consensus-driven process. It's my belief and the belief of a lot of folks who work in the community partnership space, that it's really easy to just put something in front of a group of people and get to 50 plus one. But to build real consensus around a question or a recommendation is really a powerful vindication of democracy and inclusion, and to own different perspectives together. So, last week at our, at our meeting, we broke into three different groups, and that those groups built through a consensus-driven approach. They had to hear from each other. They had to listen to each other. They had to share their perspectives. They had to propose recommendations. And then, we had to use a consensus-driven protocol to build a set of recommendations that then would move to the whole group. Now, with that process, we are now moving to our meeting this week, where we're going to be bubbling up those recommendations from the small group to then use a consensus-driven approach to finalize the recommendations as a whole group. Now, what we'll do tomorrow is we'll be hearing from a professor locally about, on the question of SROs and potential things that the Equity Council should consider. And then, the balance of the two hours and some change will really be about finalizing, building consensus, and aligning those recommendations. Now, we'll be coming back to you next Tuesday to present those recommendations and for your consideration. And then, just to flip right back, and then, after that, on our meeting of October 21st, the Equity Council will step back on the process, what they liked, what they didn't like, what they're interested in, and taking on moving forward. And that's a conversation that we've had, just very basic and preliminary conversations with Assistant Superintendent Rados and Superintendent Anderson. So, with that, I would love to stand for questions or comments.
Okay, great. And just one clarification. When the recommendations are presented to the board next Tuesday, is that in a work session or a board meeting format?
Work session.
It's a work session? Okay. All right. And then, okay, and then we can talk about what that looks like at that point. All right. So, and that is a discussion that we've already scheduled for the board to talk about the recommendations. Okay. With that, board members, do you have any, and thank you very much, Landon. Do you have any questions? I'll start. I'm going to look on the screen first. Kathy and Richard.
Well, the, can you hear me?
Yes.
I got a little, okay, great. The, I just want to thank Landon and CEI for the work that they've done. I know it's been pretty hectic and tedious and whatever, all their adjectives you want to put in there, but they've done a great job in terms of, or Landon has done a great job, and Richard facilitating the conversation with the big group. Unfortunately, board members couldn't get into the small group meetings, but we were able to at least observe the large group meetings, and I just want to thank you, Landon, for that opportunity.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Member Garcia.
Oh, sorry. Lisa?
I want to echo what Richard said and add also that the folks on the Equity Committee who was volunteering their time every week have really just been incredible. And if any of them are watching, thank you to you as well for the incredible commitment you've given to our board, into our district with this work.
Okay. Any other comments before next Tuesday? Kitty?
I just want to echo the thanks to Landon, to Mike, to the CEI, and all of the people who have been diligently working on this issue for our community. I only had the chance to listen to one whole meeting and part of another one, but I'm really impressed with the work you're doing, so thank you so much.
Okay. Any other, Kathy?
I just have a couple of questions, process questions, Landon. So, the recommendations are coming next week. Is it just a consensus approach? Is it a 51% to bring it forward? What does that look like? And how will you, if there are alternate views, how will you handle those and bring those all forward? Or what's your process?
So, we're using the consensus approach in both the small group conversation, and we'll also use a consensus approach tomorrow night as well. We're doing something called a modified consensus approach, which means that we use something called a fist-to-five protocol. You guys may be familiar with it, where if you really agree with the proposal, you do a five. If you don't agree with it, it's a one, but you're not blocking it, and then a fist is a block. And we do a modified version of it for the purposes of a large group activity, which means that a few people can still block and it move through, but it still essentially means approximately 90% of everyone in the group agrees with the proposal. But what's really powerful, Member Gebhardt, about the consensus-building approach is it allows the people that put forward the proposals to adjust and adapt their proposals based on the feedback they hear from the people that gave them the ones or the twos or the threes. You know, I really, I'm not going to block it, but I'm giving it a one, because I still don't think you've solved X issue, which allows for the combined proposal to be augmented and adapted based on that feedback. And I think we're going to see that tomorrow night. I think we're going to see different proposals starting to merge and come together for the purposes of forging of shared perspective.
So, the ultimate goal is for whatever you bring forward to have 51%? I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense so that we know kind of what the conversations were that led to the consensus. I just think that would be really helpful.
Like I've mentioned before, it'll be about approximately 85, 90% consensus.
And will you be able to share with us what some of the concerns and how they were addressed? I mean, I was, I listened to the first one. I've not listened to the rest. I've just tried to, been kind of leaving it to you all to handle it, but I would love to know a little bit more other than just the consensus. So, how would I, how would we handle that?
Tomorrow night, we'll be doing the whole group kind of adaptation and recommendation-building process, which you're, again, there was a discussion in the group where folks really felt like they wanted their small group time for themselves, and I think a lot of that's going to come up also in the whole group tomorrow. Additionally, we've noted particular questions and concerns throughout the process, so that when the full recommendation gets proposed, you will also be hearing from some Equity Council members next week, and that we'll be sharing some of the questions and concerns that came up.
I, for one, did not want to be part of any of the small group. I didn't feel like that was my role. But so, will there be a report or just the recommendations?
We'll do the recommendation, and then we'll be adding some context to it on top of it.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot. Appreciate everything you've done, and along with everyone else, I really appreciate the commitment by our community.
Appreciate the questions.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Well, thanks again. Oh, yeah, Richard?
Hold on. Landon, so the consensus conversation is going to occur in the large group tomorrow, or are you going to go into small groups?
We're going to do it. We'll probably, you know, we're still finalizing the facilitation protocol, but I think there'll be a very small, small group component with folks that are having different perspectives, but the, like, vast majority of the conversation will occur in whole-group setting tomorrow.
Great. Yeah. And I've been there only to observe. I don't want to participate on anything. I just want to observe the process, and I think it's been great to be observant of the large group participation. So, I will be there tomorrow. Thank you.
It's going to be great to have you, Member Garcia, because I think you're, I really appreciate your feedback, given that you're a veteran of so many processes like this.
Lisa?
After the SRO conversation ends, are board members still to be able to participate as observers in Equity Council, or was that a special dispensation just for this conversation?
I'll answer very briefly, but I think that the, there's an incredible opportunity for board members to still remain engaged in the process. And I think that as the Equity Council takes on the next issue it wants to take on, or that the board asks it to take on, I think that's still up for consideration. And turn to Superintendent Anderson and Assistant Superintendent Rados for kind of the full answer to that question.
I'd say it's a great opportunity to continue. I think it depends on the next topics that we ask the Equity Council to take on and dig into. But I think that board members wanting to be involved in the equity work in the district and observing is, I think is a great thing. So, we can continue to make that opportunity available. I think that's actually a really good idea.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Well, I'm looking forward to next Tuesday, so thanks for doing all of this. Our next item is an update on the University of Virginia partnership work we're doing.
Thanks, Tina. And I'll invite Robin Fernandez, Assistant Superintendent, to the podium. I know that we have many of our principals that are with us today, and just incredible work that's been happening with UVA and our Partnership for Leaders in Education. They were with us last week, continuing to celebrate success but push us to continue to improve. And so, it's a really great balance that they bring to the table. and so it's a really great balance that they bring to the table and just a huge value-add to our district, so with that, I'll turn it over to Robin.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson, good evening, President Marques, members of the board, Dr. Anderson, I am sincerely excited, actually, to be here in front of you this evening, as Dr. Anderson said, we are joined virtually by the principals of Alicia Sanchez, Columbine, and Cole Elementary Schools, and we are all excited to talk about the really substantial and truly transformative work that has gone on at both Alicia Sanchez and Columbine over the course of the past year, and they are here to tell you everything that has gone on to date, and then they will share with you everything that will continue to go on through this year. And also, we are joined by Dr. Jeff Sanford, the principal of Cole Elementary School, and he is here to talk about their work as they embark on this journey with us as the newest member of the UVA Partner School cohort, so next slide, please, Randy. So just to remind everyone, it was nearly exactly a year ago that we were before you talking about both Alicia Sanchez and Columbine, and we shared with you our initial learnings as we embarked on our partnership with the UVA, and we talked about the four levers of school transformation. Since then, so much has happened and so much is continuing to happen, and as I mentioned just a moment ago, Cole is our newest school that we have added to this group, and they are beginning the work that both Columbine and Alicia Sanchez started last year at this time. And so just to share where they have been up to this moment, I am now going to turn it over to Dr. Bianca Gallegos, the principal of Columbine Elementary School, to share their highlights of what has occurred over the past year.
Buenas tardes, it's a pleasure to be here, thank you for having us. Our transformation highlights include all Columbine staff being trained by peers and building admin and data-driven instruction, we've also engaged in bi-weekly data dives, and we have been utilizing data-driven instruction. During pre-pandemic days, engaging in bi-weekly data dives would have been amazing, however, during pandemic days, this is absolutely extraordinary, and I am so proud of the work that the Columbine staff is engaging in. We have had the opportunity to design and facilitate data dive cycles where we examine the work samples in order for us to better understand student misconceptions and how educators can adjust our lessons in order to increase students' accuracy on assessments and overall skills as scholars. Thanks to these data dive cycles, my colleagues and I are able to systematically increase students' confidence and skills in math and literacy. I know that our colleagues at Alicia Sanchez are also equally excited about the work that they are doing at Sanchez, and I'm going to pass it over to Joel Ribetta, principal at Alicia Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone, can you see me? I'm having internet issues, but hopefully I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
I'm good, I'm good, thank you, I appreciate it. So first of all, thanks for having me here and having us with the opportunity to just present the work that's going on at our school, all our schools, actually. When I introduced the 90-day plan over a year ago to staff, I actually was preparing myself for, I don't know, the worst, tomatoes, I don't know, but I used phrases like suspend disbelief and trust the process, but I could tell you now from day one, we, our staff shared this vision, and I just, I want to recognize them right now, and I hope they're listening because they truly are the most dedicated staff I've ever worked with. I was talking to a teacher today during one of my goal-setting meetings for our evaluation, and they, I tried to capture what this person said, and basically they said the depth of PD, energy, and commitment our staff took to shift the culture of how we approach, you know, working with students, especially from a social-emotional lens, was huge, and every person in the building was on board and they need to be celebrated, and that, that conversation was today, and it just hit me like, wow, we've been doing this for a year, and the transformation that we've seen's been incredible. I do want to start with the SEL work, the Social Emotional Learning work with our staff and students, I mean, from day one coming in, choosing responsive classroom as a, you know, a program to set up a positive learning environment for our kids, and how much our staff bought into that was incredible. Our Social Emotional Learning team, you know, to be a school that has a board-certified behavior analyst, behavior interventionist, school psychiatrists, school psych, school counseling, and have this team together, it's been really, SEL has been kind of the unsung hero of our, of our work, especially last year, just getting to, you know, how can we set up the environment for our kids so that they can be successful. Just to tell you like how successful the, the process of working, you know, with our staff through this SEL lens, our highest month of referrals that we had on record was about this time last year, we had a lot of behavior issues that were going on as we were trying to get our systems in place, but from this month last year to our last full month in school, we dropped our referrals by 85%, you know, hopefully that sounds as, like, epic, for lack of a better term, as, as, when I say it and what I feel, because when you talk about a drop of 85% in referrals, and you take the average referral, that's about 30 minutes of work with a student, calling families, talking to other, the people that were involved, you're looking 30 minutes to an hour of lost instructional time, and when you drop by 85%, you're actually looking at hours and hours and hours, days, weeks, months of saved instruction, and, you know, just anecdotally speaking, when Robin came to our school in January, and we were walking around, I was like, Robin, you have got to come see what's happening in our building, going in the classroom, seeing kids engaged, seeing teachers delivering engaging instruction, like, it was just an amazing thing, and I even had to like, the next two or three times she came that month, or the next month, I was like, let's come, because I want to show you, this isn't a fluke, so our teachers have been just bought into this from day one, and it's been awesome. Our data-driven instruction, like Bianca touched on, you know, for us, like, we set the foundational structures for our data meetings last year, again, with all of our teachers buying and what we're doing, so taking student performance, identifying gaps in performance, looking at, you know, what do we need to do instructionally so that we can improve performance, whether it's provide intervention, provide strengthening of content or extension of content, that foundation was set last year and has allowed us to take our efforts around the use of data to the next level, and I hope to get into that later when we talk about this year's 90-day plan. And all that, you know, again, we talk about like what we do with our teachers and the PD that we go through and the changes we want teachers to make, we talk about student outcomes and what we want. The next step for us, last spring before we went into home learning, was, you know, really connecting with our community, so we put out a survey as part of our fall, sorry, spring 90-day plan, and we had over 130 responses on this, and really what we want to do is identify what key areas that we can do and collaborate with our community, what kind of opportunities can we provide, and before we went into home learning, we actually had focus groups that were set up so that we can just better drill into what needs our community has, but that collaborative spirit started last, last spring, and we're gonna pick up where we left off with that moving forward, but those are just a few of the transformation highlights that, that we saw last year, and I'm excited to tell you about, you know, what we're gonna be doing this year for our 90-day plan moving forward, but I'll pass it off to Robin as she can introduce the next topic.
So, since we initiated our partnership with the UVA, what we have learned is that it is our job at the district office to create the district conditions that support the school conditions, that then support the classroom conditions, to really change experiences for students. That's how their experiences are transformed and ultimately their outcomes are changed. That is the goal, and so what we have learned is that it is our job at the district to provide the right kind of support, to provide enough support, and to remove barriers to this becoming a reality. So what you've heard from these two principals is that we've worked together with them on implementing focused systematic strategies. These are a few areas of focus that they identified collaboratively in their buildings, and then made the collective commitment to implementing. However, what we know is that none of what we do at the district matters, none of what we do at the school level matters if it does not reach the student level and ultimately change experiences for students. So we know that unfortunately, we can't all be in the schools right now to see the way transformation is occurring, so we created a short video that highlights the work that the teachers are leading and their experiences that they have expressed in this video about how the UVA partnership has really changed their work and transformed what is going on in student classrooms. So, Randy?
Can you find the word yellow? Yellow here.
It's really nice having a trail guide if you've never been on the trail before.
Working with our youngest learners has been the most amazing experience because they have such an amazing desire to learn, they are so curious.
Do you agree that a class should be respectful?
Partnering with the University of Virginia and the Partners for Leadership in Education has definitely been a transformative experience for our school, it has given us a really strong commitment to, to shifting the focus from teaching to the actual learning of the students, and we've been following the philosophy of data-driven instruction and using that to support our students, so that's the guiding philosophy that has underlined all this work.
Now that we've got UVA involved, and this is their second year, we're beginning to see changes in important areas. Do the kids feel safe and comfortable, is it, is it a welcoming environment, is it welcoming for all students, not some? So those are some of the issues that we've really dealt with.
They're helping us really focus on like one thing that could really lift it for us, and so it feels good as a teacher to kind of be able to put your focus in one place that you know has shown results in other schools and could do that for us. We have new assessments that we're using that kind of help us really see what's going on for kids, and those new assessments also help us really raise the level of rigor, so we're looking at what do kids really need to be successful?
We do do NOS to start class, where we often spiral content that we've already taught, and just, we're seeing how they're doing, and we also do exit tickets at the end of class, so we know, it's just a small sample, did the student get what I was teaching today?
I think people are really excited to see where this can go.
I think it should be offered to every new teacher immediately.
It's about creating advantage for every child, because when every child has an advantage in the area that they really wanted to sell in, and we all, Ben.
Isn't that fun? Fun to see the students back in school with us in person, so that makes it look easy, and when you listen to the teachers and you listen to our leaders, it sounds like they've been doing this for a long time. They haven't, as we know, they've been doing this just for a year, but the amount of focused concentration, time, and energy that has gone into truly systematic transformative change is remarkable, and they are now excited to not only share where they have been, as they've just done, but they're really excited to share where they're going now, how will the work for the schools that have been doing this for one year, Columbine and Alicia Sanchez, how will they continue the work this year? So now I'm gonna turn it back over to Dr. Bianca Gallegos to share what will be happening at Columbine for the rest of this year.
Gracias, Robin. We have learned so much already in one year, and we're ready to keep going and keep learning and keep improving. Last year, we were able to set a strong foundation in creating shared norms, we also strengthened our multi-tiered systems of support process. In addition, we set strong foundation to be able to analyze student work samples against specific grade level standards. This year, we are well-prepared to have an excellent school year. Our leadership team made up of a teacher from each grade level and each department has played an important role in outlining our work for the year and serving as a liaison between the leadership team and the school as a whole. Our three strategies are deeply rooted in our learning from last year's mid-winter retreat, where a Columbine team of teachers, Dr. McConnell, Columbine's assistant principal, and I were able to engage in professional learning in data-driven instruction. We were then able to bring our learning back to Columbine, and we're trained, and we trained the Columbine staff on data-driven instruction. Last year, we began this work with data dives and took the time to really engage in the data dive by first focusing and applying our new learnings to math. This year, we are engaging in bi-weekly data dives to analyze student skills in math and literacy as they relate to specific grade level standards. Then based on our findings from the data dives, we are able to plan our next steps as educators in order to help students reach grade level proficiency or beyond in math and literacy skills. We engage in data dives by focusing on one skill and one standard at a time, and we are very strategic and precise in the analysis and then specific in planning the next steps. Our students are so brilliant, they're amazing, we, they have so much promise and they deserve our best, and I feel so proud of the Columbine staff and all of the growth and learning that we have done as educators, and I look forward to continuing to see how our school grows, and I'm now gonna pass it back over to Joel.
Thanks, Bianca, so this next, this next 90-day plan, what we're looking at are these three strategies right now, and I will say, a lot of this work was led by our, our spring, our mid-year retreat, and like Bianca said, it was incredibly profound for me, and the teachers that we took, we took a fourth grade teacher, Di Morgan, our, one of our ELD literacy teachers, Jess Roffman, who you saw in the video, and then our assistant principal, Becky McKay, and it just kind of changed, it put some, just more intense focus on what we wanted to do for this semester coming up. So our first strategy, lesson design and delivery, informed by conversations about data and aligned to grade level standards, the main focus of this is gonna be engaging our students, so, you know, the story I told earlier about Robin coming into our classrooms and looking at what, you know, where our kids were in the environment that we had set up, it's like, look what we could do with our kids now, like, how can we give teachers the tools so that they can better engage our students, better, you know, bring them into the learning, have more output than, than, I'm sorry, have more, yeah, sorry, have more output than input, and, and move on to that next level of lesson design, which engagement would be a big part of that. Our second strategy, and again, this is kind of where we are putting a lot of, a lot of our efforts into is data-informed collaboration and with a commitment to relational trust, for us, what that is, is DDI, and again, that was like the main focus of our mid-year retreat in New Mexico was, you know, how can we, again, take data in the way that is meaningful for staff and creates meaningful conversations in our data, in our data meetings, and this one for me is just, I'm really excited about, you know, there's four components of DDI, data-driven culture, assessment, analysis, and action, and one of the first things we need to do is have a strong, strong assessment system, and, you know, going back to what Robin said earlier about supporting the schools and providing the resources they need, I remember, you know, after the New Mexico trip, and we were all excited about this, and it's like, how can we, you know, get these assessments in our teachers' hands, and we, you know, we had, and people looking around for what assessment systems that we can use, and so I just want to, you know, put a plug in there for Illuminate and the assessment system that we're using and the data sheets that come off of that, you know, where last year our foundation was set, but we were spending a lot of time, you know, looking, creating our own spreadsheets, creating our own assessments, they weren't vetted really, and we, you know, were they completely aligned, you know, they could have been, they could not have been, but looking at Illuminate, we now have like an assessment system that's just incredible, we're able to match the rigor that the kids are gonna be expected to do in terms of how, what they are going to, what kind of problems they need to solve, you know, but when you think about, you know, an assessment system that has, you know, four to six benchmark assessments throughout the year, and creating that for, you know, math, literacy, and writing, times six grade levels, it's a lot to take on, it could be a person's, you know, a department's full-time job, so the addition of Illuminate from, you know, the support of our district has been amazing, and we're actually giving our first math benchmark assessment this week, so on Monday, we're gonna have our first DDI meetings with our, with our benchmark assessments, so we, we're really excited about that and what we're gonna be able to do with that. The last thing is just a continuation, the last strategy is just a continuation from what we started with last year with our systems of creating a positive learning environment, you know, so going, taking responsive classroom, expanding on our PBIS, taking our social-emotional curriculum and just casting a wider net with those pieces is what we're excited to do this year, and, you know, we're able in responsive classroom to move from like the behavior side to more engagement, academic choice, engaging academics, which are both features within responsive classrooms, so the professional development that we're receiving there is just incredible, so we're, we are excited to see what outcomes that we had. If you look at the schools that have gone through this DDI process, and look at just how much they improve in achievement and growth, it's phenomenal, I, that was like one of my main takeaways, it's like schools that look like ours, that have, you know, could have the same challenges but the same thriving community that, as we have, and the same teaching staff that we have, taking students and just, the, the results are through the roof, so we're excited to see what happens with that, I, I know our staff is 100% committed, and we're excited, you know, I can't wait to have this, this meeting next year, we poured out. meeting next year when we report out some of the outcomes that we had. So thank you for all your support on that. And from here, I'll pass it to Robyn.
Thank you, Joel. So now, Dr. Jeff Sanford will share as the principal of Cole Elementary School, the work that they are starting at their school in year one of the partnership.
Thanks, Robyn. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about our collaboration between Cole Elementary and the University of Virginia's Partnership for Leaders in Education. And I'd also like to thank you for your support and acknowledge your commitment to school improvement, even in our current circumstances. This is such important work, and we're convinced of the transformative nature of what we're doing. I'd also just like to share my deep gratitude for the Cole staff because teaching is such a personal endeavor. And to, to really lay your practices open for critique by colleagues is a really difficult, challenging thing to step into and to do so willingly and with, with such good intent is, I think, is an important thing to acknowledge. So with so many schools in Boulder Valley that could benefit from the partnership, asking the question, why Cole, I think is very reasonable. Our preliminary school performance framework from 2019 highlights that Cole has the lowest median growth percentile ranking of any BVSD school with 95% or higher participation in the C Mass. So for reference, our median growth percentile rank was 33 in ELA and 31.5 in Mass. Our 2019 data also shows that students who qualify for free and reduced-price lunch, and those who identify as minorities, demonstrated lower growth than all students in aggregate, and even lower growth yet than other subpopulations of students at Cole. So based on these data, Cole's not only the right place for the work, but it's imperative that we take it on. And with this context in mind, we're focusing on two problems of practice at Cole. The first is that students need to receive consistent best-first instruction, also called tier-one or universal instruction, across classrooms and grade levels. And the second problem of practice is that Cole staff will arrive at a common definition of tier-one instruction and the application of evidence-based instructional practices. And we're going to get there through really targeted professional learning and collaboration in weekly data meetings. So to address these, we created our first 90-day plan over the course of the summer. And the UVA partnership's really unique in that it focuses on modifying adult behaviors, but focusing on those that really impact deeply student outcomes. And so we've looked at those, both of those in our, in our 90-day plan, focusing on four adult behaviors and then four things that students will experience as a result of us modifying those adult behaviors. The first one of those is that teachers are going to be engaging in team planning at least twice a week, looking both at data and then collaborating around the planning and instructional processes that they're implementing in the classroom. Teachers are going to be demonstrating accountability to themselves, their colleagues, and students by utilizing a universal lesson planning template for each instructional episode. And that template is something that we are designing and co-creating as a staff. Teachers will impactfully use time, so focusing all time together on collaboration around assessment, data analysis, and instruction. And then teachers will also feel assured that they're effective based on the implementation of evidence-based instructional practices. So often, we go with what we think is working, and we really are wanting to focus on using data to make those instructional decisions. As a result of all of this work, students are going to experience consistent expectations, learning structures, modeling, and use of vocabulary grid-to-grade, classroom-to-classroom, teacher-to-teacher. There's going to be an increased clarity of purpose and connections between and among content areas. There will be increased engagement and interaction with grade level content, as well as academic growth. And instruction and intervention will be targeted and individuated. So, so far, being relatively new to this process, only initiating it, preparing for launch through the spring and launching over the course of the summer, I just can't overstate enough the importance of the work that we're doing. This work with the UVA is the innovative work happening in schools today. And it's really helping us to live the ethos at Cole, which is every student, every day. So I want to thank you again for the opportunity to share about the work we're undertaking. And I'll now pass it back to Robyn Fernandez.
Thank you very much. So Randy, if you don't mind passing it to the next slide. So what are our next steps? So our next steps will include the Cole leadership and staff being able to participate in the professional development in November about data-driven instruction and learning how to really analyze and address individual student needs on a daily and weekly basis, using the Illuminate assessment that Joel Rivera referred to before. They will continue with their 90-day plans this semester and then dive deeper into those 90-day plans in second semester. Those of us at the district office who are working hard to understand what the needs of the schools are, visit these schools every week. Dr. Messier and network staff visit Columbine every week. And I visit, along with network staff, I visit Alicia Sanchez and Cole every week. Because we can't know what type of tailored support they need and what type of barriers we need to remove to them, for them achieving this work if we're not there. And so we are there. We support them. We understand what support they need. We remove barriers and we monitor the progress on their 90-day plans. Our UVA partners will be back in the spring as they continue to coach us at the district level and help us to coach the school leadership and help school leadership to coach the staffs of their schools in the continuation of this work. And then finally, we will conclude the year with additional professional development next summer. So I do want to piggyback for a moment on something that Dr. Sanford did say. Because it is the incredibly innovative work that is going on in this district. We've seen over time, across the nation, it's very easy to look at school improvement or school transformation work as being remedial in nature. It is not. It is no secret what the best practices are. In other words, what it is that schools want to do to help every student achieve the long-term outcomes that we've identified in our strategic plan, or to help them achieve to the best of their ability. The magic is in the how. And what they are learning, all of us together, is how to do this. And so what we, as a district, therefore, are learning is how, in our own context of BVSD, in our own context of the three communities in which these schools exist, Boulder, Lafayette, and Broomfield, we are learning in our variety of contexts how it is that we can do this, that then we can apply to other schools in other communities in the rest of the context of this district as we move toward further implementation of the strategic plan. And we will be back at a future board meeting to update you about that exciting work. So thank you so much. We are thrilled to have had the opportunity to share this work on behalf of students with you, and we are very happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you so much. And thank you to all the principals for joining us this evening and sharing your experiences. Board members, who would like to start with some Richard, are you good?
I got a couple of questions. And, you know, but let me, let me start by thanking the principals and the work they've been doing. It seemed like it's pretty comprehensive work that they're doing.
One second. Is there a way to make Richard louder?
Yeah. Maybe it's my, can you hear me now?
That's a little better.
Okay, I gotta speak louder into the microphone. How's that?
Better. Thank you.
Well, thank you, principals, for your presentations. And thank UVA and to guide you guys in terms of all the comprehensive work that you're doing with your staff. And we hope that through all the work that you're doing, that we're going to see some wonderful results whenever we get to the point that we're doing state assessments again. But having said that, when you, when you look at data-driven, what, when you talk about data, what kind of data are you talking about?
So I can go ahead and start, if that's okay. So we run three different cycles, actually four, if you include our behavior data. But in terms of the academic piece through Illuminate, we run benchmark assessments with math, literacy, and writing currently, that we do benchmark assessments every four to six weeks, and then have follow-up plans from those assessments.
And, and those are in, you individualize all that, right?
What do you mean, individualize?
You do it by student in terms of trying to identify the students that actually need the support most.
Well, for one, like one of the things with data-driven instruction, Bianca touched on it a little bit earlier, you know, part of the protocol when you come in is, you know, you have the facility of saying, we're going to zero in and focus on this standard. And it's usually like a standard that's a high-leverage, reteachable moment that we can go in there and, you know, you're hitting one standard, maybe one skill, but it involves a lot of, you know, different skills that can, can hit this standard. So, you know, we made the choice based off of how the students performed overall as a class. And then we have reteaching and then reassessment on that. As you do this process and move on through it, you start to see where like the reteaching is improving, you know, student performance as a, you know, more like a universal area in a grade level or class. And then you can start zeroing down to the individual level as well. So you're kind of doing both of those things concurrently.
Thank you. And the, this is for Robyn. Robyn, on your, on your visits, when you go visit the schools on a weekly basis, can you give some examples of what you see and what support mechanisms or what support some of the schools may need or have needed?
Sure. That's actually a great question. Because we have what is almost a protocol that we follow every time we are in the building, is we start with, okay, let's revisit what we talked about last week. And that was needs or action items on my part, or action items on the leader's part, or anything that was going to happen in the prior week. Where are we? What do we need? Did anything come up in the last week? How, how did that go? For example, did the network reading coordinator come to your building and meet with you about the data cycle that we had talked about? Did the professional development training on responsive classroom occur without, without fault last week? What issues are you seeing? And so we, we review what we have done in the last week. We then go back to the 90-day plan and look at the very specific action steps that we've identified for ourselves. And we say, okay, where are we? What is it that we need to do? What can we check off? What have we learned from it? What else do we need to do? Is there anybody else we need to bring into the conversation? And that's where the, the reorganization of the district into three networks occurred at a very fortuitous time. Because the, the network structure of the district really complements the work that we do. Because we have people in each network with curricular expertise, with instructional expertise, and with system expertise, that are able then for us to tap into as we need them and we bring them in to work with us. And so we identify individuals or small groups of people who can come in to work with groups of teachers, to work with the leaders, or to find materials, to create structures, and to support their work. And we do the best we can also to take work off of the staff and leaders' plates. If there are things that we as a network can do for the leaders or for the staff, so that they can focus on this work as intensively as possible, we do that. And then finally, when, when we can, we tour classrooms. And Joel was referring to that a bit before, because, again, none of what we do matters if it doesn't reach the students and does not affect the experiences that students have every day. So we go to classrooms and we say, as an example, okay, the new lesson template that we have worked on, that the teachers collaborated to recreate, that we conducted professional development to train them on, let's go see it in action. And let's talk about how you're providing them support and feedback, so that they know that they're doing it effectively. So it goes from, from the beginning of the 90-day plan to the very specific weekly action items with, always we're looking for the proof in the pudding. How is it can we, that we can see that it is actually changing the experiences for kids?
Thanks, Robyn. Rob, thank you so much, because it seems to me like you had the foresight when you started thinking about the reorganization of the, of the system, and you did that reorganization based on the areas. So, so that was, that was pretty good. And it seems to me like it's, it's working really well with these, these three particular schools. One more question, and that's the one on community collaboration. How is that working? Do you meet with families or, or community members before the pandemic? And what's, what's that process look like?
Joel, can you speak to that?
Yeah. I was just wondering if he was speaking to somebody specifically that you want to answer? I mean, I could speak to it. Like, for us, when we sent out that survey, you know, just looking at the needs of our community and hearing it from them, we had set up for, we set up four different focus groups of eight parents that had volunteered to be a part of this. And unfortunately, actually, on March 13th was going to be our first focus group. And I think March 13th lives in everybody's minds right now. So like that kind of like halted in that moment. But, you know, together with, with Ari and with our family resource manager, Jovita Schiffer, we're starting those focus groups as soon as we kind of get our dragging program off the ground, which is starting now. So looking at the end of October, early November. And so really, the goal of that is to just talk, almost like an advisory group of, outside of what we do with that and the advisory role that that group has, and just really try to target, you know, what are some key actions based on any input that we can, we can do in the school to help provide support for, for them?
Thanks, Joel.
And that's going to go, and then those actions are going to go into our next 90-day plan for our, like our SEL priority, like our third rock.
That's great. Thanks, Joel.
Yep.
Okay. Kathy, do you have any questions?
I do. Thanks. And thanks to the principals. It's really great to see all of you, kind of virtually, and to hear the great work you're doing. I just have a couple of questions. I mean, I've heard a lot of focus on measuring what, do assessments, what sound to me like various kinds of test results. I'm wondering what else you're doing to measure how you're doing besides test results?
Yeah, that's a great question. Because it isn't all about test results. But it really is about how well we are helping each student access the content and the grade level standards. Because what we know about students who perform below grade level, very often, their biggest barrier is access to consistent, effective instruction at the grade level standard. And so what we do is the leaders of these schools, but also when we are visiting, we spend time in classrooms looking at, okay, how are we coupling the work that the principals spoke to in terms of providing consistent, best-practice, universal instruction, meaning consistently, the consistent application of best practice in every classroom, every day, in every grade level? And so how are we balancing that with then being able to measure that with the data-driven instruction, knowing that we, that those two things are balanced? We are observing the instructional practices in place and giving teachers both support but also feedback on how to A, understand what those practices are, and then B, how to make sure that they have the support necessary and the professional learning necessary in order to consistently apply them. And then, of course, as Joel talked about in the situation of Alicia Sanchez, that the learning environment through the social-emotional support, and social-emotional support is something that all three leaders are focusing on, also is in place so that the learning environment is ripe for excellent instruction for every student every day. And then the purpose of the data-driven instruction then is to measure. We look at individual student work on a weekly basis to make sure that we know, based on the work that they're doing at grade level to access the, the content standards, that we then have proof that they're able to access it. And we also have the proof about what it is that we need to do to adjust our instruction to address any gaps that they may have in the content that's being taught at the moment.
So, so I hear you say that, like, one of the third rocks is social-emotional learning. But then I still hear measuring mostly on tests and assessments. I'm wondering what other things you're looking at? Are things like discipline rates going down? How are you looking at climate? How are you looking at some of the things that are a little harder to measure that you can't measure with test scores?
You know, I think that's a great question, and I'll, I'll talk about that. Because there's, you know, the 90-day Cause there's, you know, the 90-day plan is kind of like, what are the, like, the key actions that we can to get off turnaround? I mean, really is what it is. We have kids performing in, you know, our schools performing that, you know, single-digit percentiles in, in math and reading. So obviously it gets a ton of our attention. Um, but if you look at, I don't know if you have the 90-day plan of ours in front of you, but one of the metrics that we use was the TLCC survey last year. Um, and you know, one of the things on there was, um, there, you know, 31% of our staff agreed that, um, we effectively engage our community. So that was like, that was our lowest score on the TLCC survey that's given in all Colorado schools. And so we did set a goal this year with that, that we want to be 80%, which is what, which is what the district's at right now. So the district, uh, elementary schools, they score, I think 84% agree that, uh, that we engage, um, our families effectively. And we're at 31%, that's not acceptable. That's why there's a heavy focus right now in, in one of our action steps of, um, you know, we did the survey and then going off with the focus groups so that we can better engage our families after we identify the needs that they have is one piece. We also have, um, you know, we have a bully prevention grant that's connected to second step, which is our, is our social emotional learning curriculum that all of our teachers have been trained in. And so our, we have an awesome school psych, Allison Juzinski, who leads our bully prevention, uh, team. Um, and it's also connected to our PBIS, uh, system as well. And so we have, uh, like climate and culture data that we give to students. And it's like a beginning of the year, end of the year. So do kids feel safe in school? Um, you know, do you feel like you have an adult that you can connect with if something's wrong? And so we look at that data and, and if it's scoring low or if there's something that's an outlier for us, um, we immediately put in actions that will address that, uh, address that outlier. Um, and you know, at our school, when you look at the data for the, um, in, in terms of like safety, um, we did score lower two years ago when we created some of our actions last year. And we hope to address that through bully prevention. And I mean, those are just two off the top of my head that we, that we've taken. We took that TLCC survey, took the parent component of that, or the community engagement component of that. And we sat down with our, uh, our SAC. Um, and you saw Ralph on the video, he's also the leader of our, of Alicia Sanchez SAC. And we said, okay, here's where we scored low. What actions do we need to take as a group? So we created, um, we created a family, uh, a family connections committee. Um, so that are, that able to reach out and connect with our families to identify if there's a need there as well. So it's, the data that, that we presented is what's shown on the 90-day plan. But it's just one part of all the goals that we have set and, and all the data and numbers that we actually do look at.
And one other thing that's probably worth mentioning too, that I don't think you mentioned earlier, Joel, is that Sanchez has a wellness team. And when they started to engage in understanding what are the social emotional needs of students? Why is it that so many students exit the classroom because they are unable to learn or they are interrupting the learning environment for others? And so they knew that that was not about discipline. They knew it was about intervention and support, targeted intervention and targeted support. So they created a wellness team. And this wellness team works in conjunction, not only to support the, the social emotional lessons that the staff delivers on a consistent basis and the responsive classroom, social emotional support that they have in place. But this team is comprised of the school counselor, an interventionist, the board-certified behavior analyst, uh, other support people, and then the administrators, uh, when necessary. So when a child is struggling, a child can come into school sad or agitated. A child might need support during the day. What the wellness team does is push into the classroom to help prevent students from having to exit the classroom and miss instruction. But go find out, how is the student doing? What does the student need? What type of support do they need so that then they can re-engage in what's going on? So those are just a few examples between what Joel said and what I said about the Sanchez Wellness Team uh, at Alicia Sanchez that supports the, the SEL needs of the students.
So just a couple more questions back to the, so I know under strategy three, one of the things, I think this was in, in Dr. Rivera's presentation. And you talked about this a little bit, is supportive families. What does that look like?
I, I'm sorry, you cut out there for a second. Can you?
I said, what is the, the support of the families actually look like? Can you give me like an, uh, just an anecdotal example of the kinds of things you're doing to support the families?
Um, so anecdotally, a lot of examples right now, the things that comes to, on the top of my head are the things we did during home learning. Um, you know, to, to get internet into families' homes that don't have it. Uh, I mean, that was extremely complicated. Luckily, Jovita Schiffer, our family resource manager, you know, is just awesome at getting that resource. Um, you know, we have people.
Okay, Joel, just so that you know, you've frozen, but I'm happy to pick up for him, um, as he unfreezes. Um, so.
There you go.
Oops, sorry. Is everybody there?
Yeah, go ahead, Joel. Go ahead and finish your thought about how you're supporting families.
Okay, I, I don't know where I left, where, uh, I cut out. Um, but just like anecdotally, I, I, you know, just coming back to school, I mean, we've been what, two weeks back in school? Um, you know, so a lot of things that we had been doing, we're just really connected to the home learning um, to make sure that, you know, we weren't, that our kids still had the opportunities to, to learn and, you know, and to have good instruction from our, from our teachers. So getting the internet, getting food in the homes, um, you know, identifying, um, you know, we're like, we, we recently on our, on our SAC, um, we had five, um, Spanish-speaking families that joined our SAC where we had been no, no representation, you know, one before. Um, so having that happen, having interpreters at, at events like that so that we're, you know, it, it doesn't lose the flow of communication. Uh, I mean, there's just a lot of ways that we connect with families. Um, you know, if, if a kid's not signing in, they, the, the teacher sends the name to our family support team and then we're making phone calls that day. And I've got to give a shout out to our assistant principal, Becky McKay, because, um, she, you know, she called, she with a few other staff members called every single family and asked a question. You know, do you want in-person or you do want online? And so like her, uh, you know, Fabi Agona is one of our, our family liaison and Jovita Schiffer, our family resource manager. They called 296 families over the course of three days because typically they don't get, you know, the mail is not the way that they answer those questions in surveys that are on Google Forms. So they individually called everybody and spent hours doing that. So I mean, just like a whole list of things like that of connecting with families happens day in and day out.
All right, that sounds great. I just was liking to hear a little bit more than the focus on the test. So I, I appreciate all that. Um, so just a quick question to, to Robin. So you said, and the thing that I get excited about in addition to the great progress that you guys are showing is, um, what kinds of lessons we're learning to expand to other schools? And, and what are the barriers? You said you kind of go in and you're assessing what barriers are there and how to remove them. What kind of barriers are you finding and are you able to, to help remediate?
Oh yeah. So I get very excited talking about this because one of the core purposes of engaging in the UVA partnership is to be able to expand the learning across the system. And so, uh, you know, I have been before you before talking about strategic initiative 3A. 3A is about how it is that we are going to implement the strategy or are continuing to implement the strategic plan in each individual, unique school, in each individual, unique community across our system. And so what we are doing is learning about ways in which we have been successful or ways in which we haven't been as successful in our communities. And so we have begun this year, uh, a process that I will be back in the future to explain more called the affiliate schools. And this is the next layering out of how it is that we are applying our learning in other schools that are not these schools, uh, that have the most immediate transformation needs. And so we are learning how it is that the systematic application of the levers of transformation, the systematic application of instructional infrastructure, infrastructure, culture, leadership, et cetera, leads to tangible, noticeable change. And we are really, really excited about that. And I can't wait to come back and talk to you more about that. Um, now in terms of barriers, what happens, some are big and some are little. Some are resource barriers. And so, uh, Dr. Anderson has really led us in being able to understand that different schools need different resources and big resources and small resources. And he's helped us tailor our understanding. Just one example is how we in the network spend our time. We spend far, far more time at Sanchez and Columbine and Cole than we do at other schools that might not have the same need. And so when Joel or Bianca or Jeff call us and they say, oh my gosh, I really need help with understanding, uh, here's an example from this week. We really need training. We need to figure out a schedule of how to, to further engage our students in universal instruction. And so very quickly, we employed our professional learning office and they said, great, we will take care of that for you. And so just with one phone call, we said, okay, we are prioritizing this need in this school. And all of our network staff understands that we are prioritizing this for the needs of our students that need us the most, and we remove that barrier. Sometimes, uh, a principal will say, oh my word, this paperwork. I really need help with completing this form or this grant application. Can somebody else help? Boom, we do it. Uh, we said, gosh, we're really struggling with our, our lunchtime duty roster because it's very complicated. We said, great, we will help you with that. I will take that for you or somebody else will help you do that. So we try to remove barriers that might distract them from the instructional leadership work. Or we try to move, remove barriers that we didn't even know existed. So as I said, there are big examples and little examples of the removal of barriers. But what we know and what we have learned is that we at the district office set the stage for the schools to succeed or we don't. And so what often happens in school transformation work is, uh, a state or a district office looks at a school and blames. Blames them for the, their student outcome data. And so what we know is that we have had to hold the mirror up to ourselves and say, how are we helping these schools? And so we do. We help them in logistical ways. We help them in resource ways. And we help them in very practical and conceptual ways. So that they then can support the staff in implementing the practices that they're focusing on.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of what I was driving at. So thanks, Robin, is what kind of systemic barriers are you finding that we could work out on a system level? If you're finding those that could help all our schools succeed. So I appreciate you answering that. So I think that's all I have. Thanks a lot.
Okay, who else has questions? Um, Stacy, Kitty, or Lisa? Okay, great. Well, this was a, what? Oh, sorry, Rob.
I, I just want to just take this opportunity to thank our leaders, uh, that are, are leading in this work. This is not easy, although they make it seem easy as, as they stay, as they talk to you all this evening. Uh, school transformation work is, is just incredibly complicated. Um, I would say the beauty of working with UVA and working, you know, the partnership between the School of Education and School of Business, which is really what, what the partnership and leaders in education is, is they understand change management at a very deep level, right? And so you'll see things like 90-day plans. You'll hear them talk about big rocks. The key to transformation is taking one bite at a time, right? That you want to make sure, let's, you know, you know, when I think about Sanchez and the work that they did around their culture and discipline first, that then allowed the next level of, of, of planning to happen. And you'll see these 90-day plans continue to cycle as they work towards just improving practice over time. So Kathy, to your, to your barrier question, I mean, I think the biggest barrier in school transformation is people take on too much too quick, right? They get too ambitious, right? So you go into a school and they have a cultural issue and they start trying to do some type of instructional strategy. But then what happens is the kids aren't engaged, the kids don't feel safe. Like you have to take very, very, I think scripted steps, um, and tactics. And I would say that, that, um, and you have to have leaders who understand that and get that. And I think you've heard from three incredible leaders, um, tonight that are getting that, understanding that. This is going to take time. I've said this from the very beginning. You don't turn around schools in a, in a, in a, in a year, um, not something that sustains. Our goal is to not only turn these schools around, but to build the capacity amongst the teachers, teacher leadership and other leaders, community parents. And so that, that the, that we don't have to constantly have to turn around, that they're just improved. And that's the way it is. And so, um, just appreciate that. Appreciate, um, the leaders, board members. I appreciate your support with this work. Um, it takes time and it is really hard and just, I'm very proud of, of the work that we're doing.
So Rob, I, I really appreciate that because I think we all know that there are many, many examples of schools that have meteoric rises. And then two years later, they're either where they started or even worse. So I appreciate the systemic approach to that. So we don't engage in that. And I did have one question, Robin, you answered it. I don't know what PLE is. Is it the business partnership at UVA or what? Can you, in two seconds, just tell me what that is?
Partnership for Leadership in Education. So our leaders, um, in, in non-COVID times, they, they actually travel, um, to, to conferences where they hear not only from educational experts, but business leaders as well. So they learn things about change management, organizational change. Um, they learn, you know, the business aspects of leading in an organization, those executive skills. It's really an executive development, uh, program. Um, along with, you know, the, the really critical things that they need to know about instruction and systems and, um, and talent management and, and all the other aspects all coming together. So it's a really neat partnership and they've just got really incredible people that, that, um, you know, you know, our leaders and teachers are getting just high-quality professional development when they go and, and get that training.
Gina, Gina, just one quick question for Bianca, also for Joel. Uh, this is in relation to the Latino families in both schools. Uh, how are they learning more about what you're, the work you're doing with JVA? And are they pleased with the work that you're doing with JVA? Do you have any problems with that?
Um, this is actually, we, we just had our, um, our SAC meeting, I think, last week. And this was our main topic. It's like, how can we inform our, our families of what we're doing? And not just like the actions that we're taking, but, um, like those quick wins that we see. Uh, and, and it's something that certainly I want to do a better job of. Um, and we talked about several, um, ideas of like having presentable information. Cause honestly, like even talking tonight, we've been on for, you know, uh, you know, half an hour or so. Like I can go on, we can go, I can go on for hours talking about this. It's just so rich with information. So, you know, the conversation we have at SAC is like, you know, what information do, do we feel families want? And then what's the best way that we can provide that information to our families? Um, you know, what we had decided in SAC last week was for me to do is just a few different series of videos on like the turnaround process and to change something that is quick snippets of information that's kind of scales through the 90-day plan, um, with like an overview piece and then running some Q and As, uh, after that. So we are going to do that because we definitely want more representation at the December 8 meeting where, you know, uh, the, the public is, has kind of, or, you know, disconnected to Sanchez. Um, and so between now and then, we definitely want to get that stuff done and load it to our website. Um, but it is something that, you know, short of just like, hey, we're in turnaround. Here's the process and here's that letter that we sent last year. We want to make it just more immersive for our families so they can learn it better. Or not learn it better, but, um, just learn the process of what we're doing and then what their role is. Um, because like the survey, the focus groups, um, you know, SACs work with it. It, it, it's all affecting the 90-day plan. So we just want to be more intentional about providing the information about what it is and then how they can support it.
Richard, are you, yeah, Kitty?
Is Richard done?
Uh, Bianca, do you have?
Richard, you done?
Oh, yes. Gracias, Ricardo. Um, so absolutely. Also at Columbine, we are engaging our families as well. Um, we had our, our first SAC meeting of the year last week as well. We are also going to be starting up again, our families and educators together, um, cafecitos that we have at, in the evenings and we host those in Spanish. Um, I also host cafecitos con los directores en español. And that way, um, it really changes the dynamics and the power dynamics when you host, uh, a meeting in español, right? And you're not having to, um, listen, uh, interpret through these little microphones. Y puedes hablar en tu idioma and, um, it's just completely different. So I'm really proud of, um, our colleagues at Columbine and, um, our, our team because we're able to host these cafecitos in español, even though we're not able to come together in person yet. Um, we're still able to connect, um, through these cafecitos and be able to, um, really have a focus on, um, partnering with families and making sure that when we, um, are partnering with families, it's a, it's a symbiotic relationship. Um, it's not us, you know, bestowing all of our knowledge and wisdom on them. It's a, it's a two-way street. Um, the, the families have rich funds of knowledge and, um, have so much cultural, linguistic, familial capital that, um, we have so much to learn from them as well. And so, um, the design of our Families and Educators Together is to, um, approach this through a symbiotic relationship where, um, we take turns facilitating and, um, we're, we're taking turns, um, having guest speakers, um, based on, um, topics that interest nuestros padres de Columbine. Um, but then also giving opportunities for our, um, our familias who are also experts in so many different things to be able to also be the experts that we learn from as well.
Muchas gracias, Bianca and Joel. Thank you.
En nada gracias a ustedes.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Kitty?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate everybody who's working so hard on this. And I was really excited when Rob introduced us to this partnership with UVA. And it is great to see the progress that's already being made in this. And, um, one of the questions I would have had, but Kathy asked it, is how we will apply this then to other schools. But I think this is just another example of, you know, what Rob said when we were interviewing him, that if you keep doing what you're doing, you keep getting what you have. And so I'm just pleased, I'm, um, the principals and the staff and the schools I know have been working so hard at this. And one of the things I think is great about it is with the 90-day plan, you can experience success early and then you do it again and you experience success again instead of, you know, this huge long haul and maybe there'll be success at the end. So anyway, thank you all. This is wonderful. Oh, and I'm not hiding, um, my camera won't turn on. You might not want to see me, I don't know, but.
All right. All the questions I could think of have been asked. I just want to thank the principals and teachers for doing this work and especially for Cole Elementary that started this year. Uh, do, you know, opening up their practice, evaluating their behaviors for the benefit of our students in the midst of a pandemic seems really challenging. So that's a, a pretty amazing feat to be doing all this work. Um, our next item is the dyslexia screener pilot.
Thank you, Tina. And I believe we have Michelle Quasi and I was, I'm unsure if Margaret was going to introduce you, Michelle, or if you're going to start right away.
I am right here and I can just quickly introduce our Director of Reading, Michelle Quasi. Super excited to provide the dyslexia update and thanks, Dr. Anderson, for that intro. And with that, Michelle, take it away.
Great, thanks so much. And, um, do I need to present my own slides or do you grab them from the agenda?
You can run your own.
Randy, okay. All right.
Yeah, you'll want to go ahead and run your own.
I'm good, okay. Um, just give me a second then.
Actually, I found them and bring them up for you if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. I had just found them as well, but that's okay. It would probably be easier if you do it.
Okay, I think you should be able to see it now.
Yep, I sure can. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, board members and Dr. Anderson for providing me this opportunity to update you on where we are with the dyslexia screener pilot. Uh, before we jump right into it, I wanted to remind you of some history of dyslexia and BBSD. So, uh, parents concerned with dyslexia began partnering with BBSD to address the concerns that they had related to their child's reading. This got the conversation started as we began looking at practices to address reading struggles of students. So last year, at the same time, I stood before you with great excitement and a sense of pride in BBSD as we announced plans to roll out a dyslexia screener pilot. Next slide. We discussed what needs to be in a dyslexia screener and also noted that identifying letter names is the biggest indicator of later reading difficulty. So we definitely wanted that in there and then all of the other areas as well, uh, letter sound correspondence, poor spelling, um, rapid naming, uh, and then also phonemic awareness, uh, which is identified through identifying the separate speech sounds within a word. Next slide. We settled on the Mississippi Dyslexia Screener in the non-dual language schools. Uh, and it has all of the, um, subtests that I highlighted in the last slide. Uh, and it takes about 10 minutes to administer one-on-one. Uh, it gives you really great reports that are easy to understand, uh, that are generated but not saved by the company. So, uh, that's important for data privacy. And, um, and the encoding piece, which is the spelling test, is given, can be given in small group or whole class, which cuts down the amount of time it takes to administer when you're, uh, we have a child one-on-one in front of you. So COVID gave us the opportunity actually to gain access to the Spanish Rapid Automatic Naming, um, using IDEL, which is, uh, exactly the same as the Mississippi Dyslexia Screener. It's just in Spanish. And so you can see, uh, that it hits every single one of those subtests, um, and it does it in a similar way as the Mississippi Dyslexia Screener, but it provides it in Spanish. Next screen, please. Next slide, sorry. So our original timeline, last year, we had hoped to have the screener, um, pilot done last year. And so you can see kind of where our timeline was. I had just trained all of the kindergarten teachers towards the end of February of last year. They were ready to start administering the screener and then COVID came into play and we shifted to online learning. So we, uh, made the decision not to administer the screener pilot last year amidst that online learning. And so if we have the next slide, this is now our adjusted timeline. Um, I was already able to train new staff and volunteers, or actually, I'm going to do that tomorrow. Um, I trained a couple of other people in other things. And then the, uh, working with EC or the Early Childhood Education, uh, people, then we decided because it is a universal screener that is given only to kindergarten, we did not want to give it at the same time as some other assessments are going on. And so we decided together that this screener would be given this year, October 26 through November 6. That's the window to administer the screener. Um, that will give me some time in, um, November and December to go ahead and start analyzing the results. And then we also want to think about how are we going to continue this pilot in coming years and working towards full implementation? So next school year in the spring of 20, um, or next school year in the fall of 2021, we can go ahead and administer it to a larger number of schools, however, still not encompassing all elementary schools. And then the following year, go ahead and roll it out to screen all kindergarten students that are enrolled in Boulder Valley School District. Next slide, please. So we had to think through a couple of different ways to administer, uh, this based on where we were in the COVID reintroduction phases. And so right now, because we are in phase two plus, um, moving towards phase three, four, and hopefully five, um, so we are looking at, um, that students that are in-person learning, the, we have been able to secure the vision hearing screeners that will go into these pilot schools and administer the dyslexia screener. Uh, those, that's the staff that I'm going to be training tomorrow. So we have four vision hearing screeners that will divide up among the nine schools. Uh, University Hill will have interventionists as well as paraeducators do the Spanish screening. And then, uh, for the Spanish speakers that are in, uh, that elementary school. For those students who are, um, English speakers within University Hill, um, the vision hearing screeners will also go in, uh, to there and, um, provide the screener. Students who are in at-home learning, um, we will have the vision hearing screeners will also screen remotely. And we also have a team of interventionists who, um, can also go in, uh, and, you know, go ahead and screen those students who are at home remotely. So we'll be able to capture all of the students, whether they're in at-home learning or, uh, in-person. Again, spelling will be given whole class by the teacher before the vision hearing screeners go and administer the other subtest. We, uh, figure it will take about two to three days for these screeners to go in and, um, administer this to all of the schools involved. Next slide, please. So we had to also think about, uh, the different health protocols now that we are back in person. It is a one-on-one administration. Um, the student and the screener will be six feet apart. Uh, they will both be wearing a mask. Uh, and I, I note that the student will wear the mask when they are able to do so because these are kindergarten students. Um, and so, um, you know, if they are unable to wear a mask at that time, we will still be six feet apart. Um, and then the materials will be printed for each student that is, uh, is taking the screener and then it will be shredded in secure bins as the student finishes the screener. Uh, and a new set of materials will be provided for the next student. That will reduce, um, you know, the, the transmission and also the need for, um, you know, cleaning off those materials. It, it is, it, because it takes less than 15 minutes per student, that is ideal. Next slide, please. Okay, so here are the, so we have, uh, in the 2020 pilot schools, we're actually able to now announce who those pilot schools are. We have, um, 10 schools, including one dual-language school. Um, and the variety of demographics are represented because we know that dyslexia does not discriminate. And so we want to make sure that we are assessing all demographics, um, you know, or as many as, as we can. Next slide, please. Okay, so these are our 2020 pilot schools. You will notice that there are schools in every single network. Um, and then University Hill is our dual-language school that will be administering the Spanish screener. Next slide. Once we have administered the screener, then, uh, part of the process of me evaluating the success and next steps is, uh, we are going to engage the Student Assessment and Program Evaluation Department to help us to, um, you know, look at all of the data and analyze that. Um, and so, you know, the things that we will be looking at is, first of all, did the screener actually do what we thought it would do? Um, and, and did it have all the components that were necessary to correctly identify the characteristics of dyslexia? Um, did it really actually take less than 10, 10 to 15 minutes to administer or did it take longer? Um, how easy was it to administer, both in the virtual setting as well as in, uh, in-person learning? And also, you know, did it over-identify or did it under-identify? Um, and so those are all of the things that we will be looking at to, you know, decide whether or not this was a successful pilot and if it's a successful screener. And so then, you know, a lot of, um, people out, out there are asking us, okay, so then what? Um, what are the next steps when we identify those students who are exhibiting the characteristics that may or may not be dyslexia? Then we really know that that direct explicit systematic multi-sensory instruction that breaks down the structure of the English language is what works best for these kids. We already have that, um, in our, uh, non-dual language schools. So we have foundations in kindergarten through second grade. It was rolled out to second grade, uh, this year for universal instruction. We also have a number of teachers and interventionists who have been trained in Orton-Gillingham methodologies that, um, works for kids who, uh, display the characteristics of dyslexia. And then, uh, in special ed, we have Wilson. And so we actually have, uh, the best instruction for these students already in place. Um, we just still need to identify who these, um, students are so that we can then make sure that we are getting them intervention, um, you know, if they need that, that is appropriate to, to how they learn. Okay. So, um, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you so much for all that information and for also giving us some of the new, uh, variations in the pandemic scenario and the new timeline. Any questions, board members? Uh, Richard?
Me, the, thank you very much for the presentation. It was great to see that you have the dual-language immersion school.
Richard, it's a little hard to hear you again.
Okay. Can you hear me now better?
Yes.
I can.
All right. I don't know what it is with this microphone and this computer, but anyway, I'll try to get, uh, thank you so much for your presentation. It was wonderful to hear that you have the dual-language immersion, at least Uni-Hill included in there. But I also see some of the schools in the 2020 pilots that may have some, uh, Spanish-speaking kids in there. Are they going to get the IDEL?
Yes, they will.
Excellent, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Stacy, Lisa, or Kitty? No? Okay, great. Well, so thank you so much for all of that information. And our next item is the legislative update. Do we have an update? Nope, we're all good? Got other things to think about? Okay. Um, is everyone okay if I continue on without a break? Everyone okay? All right, great. So then we'd like to move to our action items, the consent grouping. I'm going to read the items. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, September 15, 2020 Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, September 22, 2020 Special Meeting, 7.4 Approval of Minutes, September 22, 2020 Regular Meeting, 7.5 Approval of Minutes, September 29, 2020 Special Meeting, 7.6 Approval of Minutes, October 8, 2020 Special Meeting, 7.7 Acceptance of Donations, Centennial Middle Schools, 7.8 Master Services Agreement, No Red Ink, 7.9 Revised Contract, Illuminate Education. Are there any items board members would like to pull? I'm looking at Richard and Kathy. No. And then I'm looking around. Okay, no items to pull. Um, can we get a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Kitty, seconded by Stacy. Are there any questions about the items on the agenda? Nope. All right. Laura, would you mind calling the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Our next item is the, um, adopt, we have a policy action, which is 9.2 Adoption of Board Policy Revisions, KI. This is a policy that I think we looked at September 20th. Uh, are there any questions or anything you wanted to add, Rob or Kathleen?
No.
No? Okay. Board members, did you have any further questions about policy KI? It's about visitors to schools. Kathy and Richard? You're okay? All right, can I get a motion to approve, uh, policy KI? By Stacy and seconded by Kitty. Uh, Laura, would you mind calling the vote?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. So now we have two items on policy study. Uh, the first item is Board Policy IGDJA, the Interscholastic Athletic Code Associated Regulation and the Exhibit. All right, so, um, this is new, so why don't you tell us about it? The first item is Board Policy IGDJA, the Interscholastic Athletic Code Associated Regulation and the Exhibit. All right, so this is new, so why don't you tell us about it?
Good evening, board members. You will recall that on September 22, we did have students, or former students from Fairview who provided public comment to the board directed specifically at our athletic code. When I dug into the policy items that the former students were talking about, I shared some of their concerns that it was time for us to revisit these policies and bring them to be more current. This particular set had last been addressed in 1982. So a few things. First, really, we looked at this policy and believe that, like our friends at CASB and our other peer districts, we need to have a policy that addresses interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities. Part of the other clarifications are really to make sure that students understand that participating in athletics or in extracurricular activities is a privilege. It is a part of their educational experience. And it is subject to the same conduct expectations that we have for students when they're engaged in instructional activities. So really, we were aligning that language to make sure that that was clear. And then make, also to make clear that discipline and investigations of misconduct or alleged misconduct are a school responsibility. They are not just for a coach to investigate, that it's something that needs to be done consistent with our expectations for our student code of conduct and discipline policies. So those were the main changes to the policy, which is the first item that you'll see in the packet. The second item then is the regulation. So we had some language about consequences for misconduct that were originally in the policy. We also have language about sanctions, this missing a certain percentage of games, that came from our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. We want to make sure that this information is all in one place and consistent. So we've taken the regulation and used that as the place to put together all of the language around consequences or possible sanctions for violations of the code. And then the final item is the actual student acknowledgement itself, which is an exhibit to the policy. So this is on first, first read for the board tonight. Putting together these red lines, I did work with the graduates of the system who came to the board on September 22, as well as with Jordan Goto, who is our health coordinator and has been really important and essential to our Title IX work. Today, I was able to meet with Michelle DeBerry and a number of our athletic directors to talk through these changes with them because I hadn't had an opportunity to do that when preparing the red line. And just received a lot of, okay, that's great, let's get it current, aligned, and in one place. So that's the work that has been put into IGDJA and the regulation and the exhibit.
Okay. Stacy?
Thanks, Kathleen. Just a couple of questions and comments. In the policy, it says that whether or not a student signs the acknowledgement, it still applies. So my question is, when you talked with Michelle and the athletic directors today, was there a discussion about how this will be distributed to student athletes for them to sign it?
Yeah, we have had conversation about that. So I was not aware before my, I've actually had two conversations with Michelle DeBerry. So in my first conversation with her, she shared with me that we really are looking, like so much of our work is going online, at making sure that this is done as part of student registration or through an online form, so that it will be much easier for us to verify that it's been done and where it resides. As you can anticipate, our IT department has a tremendous amount of work that they're undergoing to get the instruction online with the pandemic. But I think we are still looking to align it that way so that it's all done online and as part of that registration process over the next several months.
Thanks. And then my other comment question is about coaches and I guess also advisors in the case since it's extracurricular activities. A lot of club sports, they require coaches to also sign a code of conduct. And so I was wondering if something similar resides somewhere else for coaches since they're employees? Or if it's something that we should look into to also have a code of conduct specifically for coaches and advisors in this vein?
Would you like me to? Okay. Thank you for that question. I do think that when we talk about our coaches, who sometimes are employees and sometimes are external or just providing the coaching service, that we do want to make sure that we have very clear agreements in place with those coaches that invoke the staff code of conduct and behavioral expectations that we have in our G policies. So my first thought would be, I'd like to investigate the sorts of agreements that we're using with coaches to assign them to that duty and make sure that those documents are clean and clear and aligned with this policy. And then with your permission, I'd like to come back with a recommendation about whether an additional policy might be an important supplement.
That's great. Thank you, Kathleen.
Kathleen, I had a quick question on page, I think it's the second page of the middle one, the regulation. It states that for drug, alcohol, and tobacco offenses, a student may petition the principal for reconsideration of eligibility after a period of four months if the athlete participates at the family's expense in a school-approved education, et cetera. Is there a way that we can pay for that program? Because that seemed, it would discriminate against people living in poverty from being able to participate.
Yes, I appreciate the comment. And I do think that that's something that we should look at more closely. I'd like to look at what our approved educational programs are for this purpose, too. And I will look at that before we bring this policy back to the board and address that item.
And just a general comment, a lot of students have different strengths through their academic career. And I, I hope that we can look at this policy with the spirit that, for some students, playing the sport is the highlight of their life, that encourages them to work on the other aspects of their life that might be academic or otherwise. So I hope that when we call this a privilege in the opening paragraph, that it's not a privilege in that you have to earn it through some other means, but the idea is that kids participate because we know that that feeling of being successful in one thing might carry over to other things. So our ultimate goal is that children and students can, can be a participant, and we're not sort of looking for ways to move them out based on other behavioral issues. So to the, you know, to the extent that that, that would be my opinion, is the idea is to allow kids to play sports as much as we can and obviously in compliance with CHASA. Kitty?
I have a couple of things. One is on the very first page where it talks about the physical examination. I'm just curious why we have to say that the examination must be consented to? Because can kids go get an examination, I mean minors, without their parents?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent question. So that language is in our existing policy. And when I tried to take out the language around parent participation, I was concerned that it suggested that we, as a district, might be initiating some sort of physical examination without parent knowledge. But perhaps I could find better wording there as it is.
And then is it safe to assume that if the student is 18, they don't have to have their parents' consent? Or do they still?
Boy, that's a complicated question. But why don't I try to address that when I come up with some better wording for that item?
Thank you. Okay, Stacy, have one of my questions, so I can skip that. When you get down to disciplinary procedures, and the pages aren't numbered, but if you can find where that is, it's the 1, 2.
At the bottom of page 3.
Third, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
And it talks about investigations shall be conducted by the school. And the only concerns I have with this is if it's an investigation that constitutes, I mean, if the issue is suspected to be something that's reportable as child abuse or child sexual abuse, the school should definitely not be investigating. And I just wonder if we can have language in there that clarifies that.
Absolutely.
Okey-dokey. Moving on. Now, this is something I asked Rob about that just seemed a little bit confusing to me. It's the next page where it's talking about the determination to impose sanctions. And it's talking about through the, the schools through which the activity is conducted. And I get that there are kids who might open and roll out of their neighborhood school but compete on their neighborhood school teams because, you know, their school doesn't have one. But what if the school that's conducting the activity isn't a school that's in our district? Or, or does it mean that if you're on, say, the team of Monarch High School and you go play somebody in Adams 12, it's still Monarch High School that's conducting it?
So that language was intended to address the situation you identified where a student might be participating in an activity at a school other than the school of which they attend.
So then, that, it's not really who's, like, putting on the, the activity or competition, it's the school that the child is, student is participating in. Is that correct?
That is correct. But again, I think we could come up with better language.
Okay. And so a lot of it I noticed in this, a lot of the language is very sports-centric. And I know that there are tons of activities that have nothing to do with sports. And so I was hoping we could come up with something that sounds a little more inclusive. So the last page of IGDJA, they talk about a student subject to the policy throughout the season of the sport or the activity. But then it talks about the first day of practice. Well, not all activities include practice. And then same with postseason competition. So if we could come up with something that just talks from the very beginning to the very end. And there was another place where that came up, too. But moving on to the, the regulation. So general principles on the first page of the regulation, students shall not transfer between schools or districts to avoid penalties. And how would you enforce that? I mean, obviously, if you transfer between schools within the district, we can. But how would that be enforced if a kid opened and rolled out to another district?
Yeah, that was existing language that was retained as part of the sanctions. So I would love to talk with Michelle DeBerry or some of our athletic directors who might have more direct information about it.
Right. And also, the family could actually move and the student would re-enroll, you know, would enroll in another school. Then the third bullet point, talking about suspensions. Again, there's sports-specific language. My suggestion is for the second sentence there to be the athlete may not compete in any way until the suspensions have been served. And that way, you're talking, that language would include any kind of activity that's going on. And then later in the next sentence in there, I would just suggest changing his/her to And then the next page, under first offense, so we're talking about students being suspended for 20% of the scheduled contests and activities. And it talks about games. And I'm thinking, when you're on a team, there are probably multiple people who can play that position. You don't, it doesn't put the team at a disadvantage if, you know, their running back has to be replaced by another running back. But what about for performances? Now, if it's a choir, it might not make a difference. But if you're talking about a play and you're talking about, say, color guard and sometimes band, depending on how many people there are in a park, how would that translate to those kind of activities?
Well, I think if you look at the beginning of the, the policy, we really do want to retain principal and school leadership discretion to assign an appropriate consequence. So when I think we clean up some of the red lines and we don't have quite so many words and notes on the page, I hope that that will be clearer. But I also will look to make sure that it is because I do appreciate your comment.
Well, and I could also see, you know, reading this to the letter, that somebody who's an athlete and experiences a consequence, and that athlete was doing whatever they were doing with somebody who is in the play, how is that fair? So, and is there anything else? Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Lisa? Any questions? No. Richard? And Kathy, got anything? Okay, great. So we'll see this policy again the next couple of weeks. And we can move on to the next policy, which is Board Policy JO, Student Records.
So we are coming forward and requesting a very, very limited revision to the policy at this time. If you look on page 2, because this one actually does have page numbers, which I'll make sure I remember. The current policy says that student records are going to be made available to families upon request within three working days. When we receive a parent request for records in my office, which we frequently manage student records requests in our office, it is a very elaborate process these days. It's no longer just pulling one cumulative file and putting it on the Xerox machine and making a copy. We are securing documents from multiple locations. Parents are often also requesting emails. My assistant and I work on these regularly. We currently have nine requests for student records, all of which will result in thousands of pages being made available to families. We are begging you because we simply cannot deliver on this policy promise, that we change this language to be reasonableness, with the understanding that this board is asking us to be very responsive to parents and to get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay. Board members?
I just have a question. So, I mean, I, I get that this is a huge job and I have, you know, I completely agree with changing the language. Do you have to go through all that rigmarole when a student moves to a different, somewhere, you know, any other district and you have to send the records along? Is it that time-consuming for that as well?
No, typically it isn't. Because most districts that are receiving a student aren't interested in all of the emails or other documents. And so those are typically handled by our registrars in school buildings. It's when we have lawyers involved or it's something that is centered in a dispute that my office will assist with those. The FERPA, our governing law, does provide 45 days to respond to student requests. I'm not sure how we got to three, but.
It seemed reasonable in 91.
Yes, it did seem reasonable in 91. Remember, that was pre-email.
Yeah, right. Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
I am just wondering, do you think that will meet most of parents', parents' needs? Not their hope? You know, everyone wants things as quickly as possible. But do you think for the, for the reasons that you produce records, will this more or less meet the timelines that you think that they're trying to achieve? And will it meet the timelines, if it's a dispute, that we have stipulated out in KE and KER?
Absolutely. Because this is really looking at that broad-scale records request. When families are seeking something much more limited, it doesn't take three days, it's immediate. We also have additional legal requests. We also have additional legal requirements we need to be aware of when we're talking about our kids with disabilities and dispute resolution. There are different timelines that apply, and those would apply irrespective of this policy.
Fantastic, okay. Other questions? All right, that seems like a good idea. So then we will see that again as well. And that's it for our policy study items. The last item we have is agenda setting. I think that we all received an email from Laura asking about when we're available to have a retreat, at which point we'll talk about priorities. Also, understanding that our staff is more or less booked for the next couple of months. So we do have some issues there. So agenda setting items, you can bring them up now, you can email Rob or Laura, you can also bring them up at the retreat. Anything? No. Okay, so with that, I would like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.